Well, good evening. Welcome to Meet the Candidates, a forum for candidates running in the November 5th general election. This segment of the forum is for Ham Lake City Council. I'm Carrie Lund, Executive Director of the Ham Lake Area Chamber of Commerce, who co-sponsor Meet the Candidates with the Anoka Blaine Coon Rapids Area League of Women Voters. All candidates who are invited to this forum, the Chamber of Commerce and League of Women Voters do not support or oppose any political parties or candidates for office. The League does help citizens become informed voters and advocates for important issues. This is what this evening is about, informing our voters. If you're interested in the League, visit their webpage, L W V A B C M N dot org. Women, men, and young people are invited to join. The views expressed in each forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters or of the Chamber. L W V posts complete, unedited recordings of forums. Editing is authorized only for official media. Reporting excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan political purposes. The candidates will answer two introductory questions which they received in advance, followed by questions submitted by the public via our website, and questions of importance to the Chamber of Commerce and the League of Women Voters will end with closing statements. Answers are limited to 90 seconds for each of the two introductory questions and one minute for each of the other questions. Candidates will take turns being the first to answer a question. Gretchen Sable is our moderator for this evening.
Thank you, Carrie. So, my name's Gretchen Sable, and I am President of the League of Women Voters here in the ABC. ABC is Anoka, Blaine, Coon Rapids, or maybe it's Andover, Bethel, Champlin. We serve all of Anoka County and pretty much all of District 11 as well. So, we are your League of Women Voters, and we are here to serve the voters. So, Carrie said most of my opening remarks here. You still good on sound, TJ? Okay. So, I'm going to skip down. So, the League, like she said, does not support or oppose any political parties or candidates for office. I'm sure that these candidates care who you vote for, but that's not a League priority. Our priority is that you know what's going to hap- what these people are about, and then you do votes. So, that's our goal, to have informed voters. With us tonight are candidates for Ham Lake City Council. So, there's three candidates for one seat. The three candidates are David Drager, Andrew Hallberg, and Mike Van Kirk.
I think there's two seats.
Two seats. Oh, two seats. Oh. Okay. There's two seats. Thank you.
Better than my odds.
Thank you very much. I appreciate being corrected, so feel free here. So, welcome to the candidates. So, we're going to start with these two questions, and you get 90 seconds each one. The questions are timed, and we have timers that will notify the candidates whenever it's time to quit. So, just so you know. What is your motivation? The first question, what is your motivation to run for this office, and what experience or knowledge would help you to serve effectively? And we'll start with David.
Well, first off, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for having us. Like most people, I didn't really follow or care about City Hall until I had to deal with it. Once I did, I found it was pretty fraught with inconsistency. I would ask a question, get an answer, only to find out that answer was wrong a week or a couple of years later. Working with this inconsistencies, inconsistent City Hall is the reason I wanted to win. People in Ham Lake, their time and money are valuable. They can't plan ahead if they go to City Hall and get the wrong information. This sends a message that they don't value their time or their money. This is not the message I want to have residents to have. From my experience, I worked as a Juvenile Correctional Officer for 18 years. Numerous times, a situation would arise where I'd have to look at not just the situations in front of me, but what's going to happen, and look far enough ahead, because if I didn't do it, myself, my coworkers, or the residents would get in harm. I want to be able to look, I want to be able to run and be on the City Council, because I want to see the problems that are going to happen before they happen and address them in advance. One of the current problems I think we could possibly have is with Mr. Hallberg being Mr. Van Kirk's nephew. I don't know if Ham Lake is ready for 40% of the City Council to be run by one family.
Thank you very much. Next, we're going to have Andrew Hallberg give his opening statement, or respond to the opening question. What is your motivation to run for this office, and what experience or knowledge would help you to serve effectively?
Yeah, so, once again, thanks for having us. My name's Andrew Hallberg. The way I see the city is from having lived here pretty much my whole life. I'm young, I'm 35 years old, but I've lived here for 29 years. I've seen Ham Lake, what it was back in the 90s through the 2000s to what it's turning into today, and I take a great deal of pride in being a member of this community. And I think, just like anything that you do in life, if you have pride in it, you want to do something to take care of that and to have a hand in how it's run, keeping it the way it is. And so, that's kind of my derogative for running for City Council. I've started up two different startup businesses in Ham Lake. So, from, and this goes back to about 15 years ago. So, I've made myself pretty aware of what different aspects of the city require, from being a citizen, paying your taxes, keeping up your home, to also what it takes to try and work as a business in the city. And I've seen some things that are done very well, some things that could be done better, and I think I can definitely have a hand in making some progress there.
Thank you very much. The final candidate is Mike Van Kirk. What is your motivation to run for this office, and what experience or knowledge would help you to serve effectively?
Well, you know, to answer the shot that was taken there, I was originally just going to support Andrew as he was running for council, because there was only one seat. Then Gary Kirkheide called me and told me that he wasn't going to run, and I didn't want to leave 35 years worth of experience and knowledge left open, so I decided to run since I had experience. I was obviously the mayor for nearly 12 years, responsible for some of the lowest, me and the council, for some of the lowest taxes in the state of Minnesota, I believe, where even last year, our tax rate was even less than some of the townships locally. Personally, I ran a business for 35 years, several businesses, off and on. Currently, I work full-time as a charter pilot for Club Jet. And I think when it comes to, yes, government isn't perfect. We do have some things, maybe at City Hall, that aren't perfect. But one of the things we did do is during my 12 years is we made a conscious effort to make our codes and our building plan stuff so that people could come in and make it work for them. Nothing's worse than the government, "I'm sorry, butt monkey," coming in going, "Sorry, we can't do it, we only fit in this box," you know, by the book, so to speak. So, I think my experience of that, making it Ham Lake, having larger building sizes, keeping some of the things that would be inherently against that stuff. I only got so many seconds anyhow. So, I'll end with that. I think my 12 years of experience as mayor will suffice for this question.
Okay. Andrew's up first a second time. So, the second question is, what are your goals for Ham Lake's future? Andrew Hallberg?
Yeah, and so, I kind of addressed this with North Metro Television a couple of weeks ago. I think Ham Lake has done a phenomenal job of being responsible, being accountable to its residents with the low taxes, with what they've done to allow property owners their rights, you know, being able to have chickens, be able to do what you want with your property in most cases. What I want to do is make government more approachable. As a young person sitting in some of those meetings, looking for a conditional use permit, you know, building permits, stuff like that, you put a lot on the line, and it can be pretty daunting. And I think my years of coaching high school, wrestling for Andover, and being involved in the community, and being open to people, I want to bring that into the City Hall chambers. When somebody comes in, I want them to feel invited, like they're in City Hall, but it's their City Hall. They are a Ham Lake resident. What their voice is, it matters, and I want to hear. You can't make everybody happy at all times, but to listen, to be understanding, and to work for them, that's what our job is.
Thank you very much. Mike Van Kirk will answer this one second. Mike, what are your goals for Ham Lake's future?
Well, I'd like to continue what we've worked so hard for in the last probably 25, 30 years, starting all the way back to some of the early mayors, including Gary Kirkheide, and that is government for the people, by the people, and mostly to stay out of the way. I remember when I ran the first time, I ran when they were talking about the sewer district coming in. One time, in one of these forums, somebody asked me, "What's your main goal?" And I said, "My main goal is to keep people with goals out when it comes to certain goals." But we've got excellent taxes, we've got a revolving street fund, you don't get assessed for your streets. We've slimlined government, especially from the paperwork stuff, all to iPads in the Building Department. We've got a code committee. I revitalized the committees when I first came in. We weren't working in so many committees. I worked extremely hard with law enforcement on budgets and whatnot. I want to keep this going. What the people before me have done, I kept going, passed the torch on to maybe Mayor Kirkham to keep it going, be responsible with our taxes, always have, we got more than plenty in our reserves, and to pick off, one of the things will be debt-free in 2026. So, and that's just a clear sign of responsible government, and that's what I want to continue with. I have the ability to lead that, and I know the people to deal with, and I think that's the most important. Andy touched on some of the peripherals, but the main thing is, as I mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so, David Drager, what are your goals for Ham Lake's future?
Well, my goals for Ham Lake are to really slow down and make sure we're doing things Not only do I want people to be welcomed into City Hall when they come in, but it's, few things are more frustrating than you get in the City Hall, getting paperwork approved, getting things done, you build whatever you want to build, and then 10 years later, it comes back, "Oh, by the way, we let you do what you want with the property, but you're now going to have to undo it. You're going to have to move that garage over five feet, because we messed up the paperwork." A few things are more frustrating than that, so I just want to get everybody back on the same page, make sure we're slowing down, we're getting things done correctly. I want to make sure that the Parkland Fund, when we do developments, that we update the policies. Right now, I mean, it's, right now, the prices are stuck in 2011. All right? I know a lot of people would love to have, to pay 2011 prices for the property, but when it comes down to it, we need to update a lot of the policies, we need to get City Council back, and actually, the employees on the same page, so they can answer questions properly.
Thank you very much. Can I pass that down to Mike, so he's ready here? So, the first question, then, from the public, what do you think is the most urgent challenge facing Ham Lake?
You know, the good part about that is, I don't think there's anything extremely urgent. We do have housing developments that are going to be coming in, they're going to be high-end, and we want to make sure that, you know, the developers come in smoothly, and that the road building and that kind of thing, especially in southeast Ham Lake. Again, we're going to be debt-free in another year and a half. Our fire station, the current mayor wrote a check for fire station number three. We don't have any debt with that, and filled it up with vehicles without going in the hole on that, and dipped a little into the reserves, but our reserves are so fat. Again, more of the same, keep it going as it is, and as far as being compatible with government, I served on the code committee. It used to be, kind of like what Dave was mentioning, you'd come in, you'd get, we streamlined a lot. It can't be perfect for everybody, maybe one person or two has a complaint now and then, we do get that. But overall, we've made it super easy. People come in that can't fit things in the code, we have a go to the code committee, we alter the code, we make it work, we include, you know, right-of-way lands, that kind of things to make it work. I think we do a good job in being inviting, back in the days when, at the end of the crash, we worked hard with, and reached out to a lot of developers coming in, and...
Okay, you want to pass the mic back up?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed my end time? I'm sorry. Give me a microphone.
So, David Drager, what do you think is the most urgent challenge facing Ham Lake today?
I think the most urgent challenge facing Ham Lake today is, the residents that are currently in Ham Lake are nervous about the developments. We're all nervous about turning into Andover or Blaine. I mean, you drive from Ham Lake to Andover, you don't need to know a sign. You can see a house, house, house. Second you hit Andover, it's just house, 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 house. We moved to Ham Lake, and we live in Ham Lake, because we want it to remain the rural Ham Lake we want. I think that's the most important, just to let people know, giving them a heads-up, so that they buy a house, and then all of a sudden, it's not a sub-development two or three years later. I think that's the most important thing we need to meet with, for Ham Lake.
Thank you very much. So, Andrew Hallberg, what do you think is the most urgent challenge facing Ham Lake today?
Yeah, I mean, it's actually what both Mike and Dave already touched on. But that being said, it's far from urgent, because Ham Lake has been developing for a long time. You know, where I grew up on East Lake Netta Drive was a house and 20 acres, and then there was a 20-acre swamp. The 20-acre swamp is there, still there, but the 20 acres has now turned into 12 houses. And that all started back in the mid-'90s, and the developments have been making their way down the streets, so, but we haven't lost that rural feel. And you can't control what someone does with their private property, you can't control what a farmer does and who he decides to sell to, to develop it. But you can control one-acre lot sizes, you can control getting the city easements, so that as those areas develop, you can work bike paths in through the city, stuff like that, to make it more friendly for children moving around, being able to get from neighborhood to neighborhood.
Thank you. David Drager is up first. What are two things Ham Lake is doing well, and two things that could be improved?
Two things Ham Lake's doing well? One, somebody asked a question about parks in Ham Lake. And so, this last week, I went and visited every single developed park we have, and a couple of the undeveloped parks we have. Most of our parks are in pretty good condition. Some of them do need to be fixed up. Ham Lake, another thing Ham Lake does well is, the community is very, I want to say, passionate about being private. We obviously look around us, and we see Andover, we see Blaine, and we just don't see a lot of people that are like, "Hey, let's do all these big crazy things." A lot of people are just like, "You know what? I moved to Ham Lake to be left alone." That's another thing Ham Lake does well. Well, could we do better? I think we could do better is more community events. I love the snowball, it's right by my house, and I was really, really disheartened when it stopped for COVID, but...
Thanks. Andrew Hallberg, what are two things Ham Lake is doing well, and two things that could be improved?
Well, I mean, it kind of comes up like a broken book, because, or a broken record, because we, the taxation, the way that we are stewards of the taxpayers' money, that is, that's being done very well, and once again, being done better than any other city of our size in the state. So, that's being done extremely well. I would also say that with how we're working with developments coming in, the developments that are coming in, they look good. Through the planning process, the streets going through these developments, they make sense. So, I mean, just part of the code, how the developments have to work with the city and the city statutes. What could be done better? You know, quite frankly, I would think, and I had something here, what could be done better would probably be, I would go on with, we need a grocery store, we need to be business-friendly, so that, we, I think back to when Soderquist New Market was in town, and Ham Lake, Ham Lakers shouldn't have to drive to Blaine to Andover all the way up to Isani to go to the grocery store. And I think by being business-friendly, we can find somebody that can bring something like that into our city.
Thank you very much. Mr. Van Kirk, what are two things Ham Lake is doing well, and two things that could be improved?
Well, obviously, financially, we're doing awesome. I always have been. I think the general public doesn't have to pay for road improvements in their neighborhoods. We have an excess of money, funding in our reserves. We have, we're almost bought and paid for, we have our third fire, we've done really well over the years. And this, look, when I took over, it was during the worst economy since the Great Depression. And Dave mentioned, and true, that some of the parks could be improved. We started doing all that once the money started rolling in with, but I think one of the, another thing that we do really well is our capital investments, our buildings, our vehicles, our plows, all of our city vehicles, we've done exceptionally well with. Couple of things we can improve with, would, you know, to continue to develop some of the streets that got built in the early years that have to be redone. And if we can, we'll continue to work with neighborhoods on that.
Thank you very much. Andrew's up first on this one. So, now we have question three. As a leader in Ham Lake, your decisions can have deep impact on businesses of every size. Are there any local changes you would pursue to encourage economic development in our community and support businesses of all sizes? Andrew, you're up first.
You know, and actually, on this, I think, going off of what the city has done a little bit before, because I actually worked with this, with a business that we started up, we had to work with the city on starting a dog kennel. It had parameters to what was required, and to meet those parameters, we met, we talked, it went through the code committee, and decisions were made that allowed us to move forward with the kennel that we were starting at the time. And so, I think that's probably the biggest thing, is being business-friendly by looking at common sense things. What does the code say? What are the interpretations to it? And how can we make it work for the citizens? And how can we work with the citizens? If they're way out in left field, okay, let's not throw that idea out the door, let's work to bring that together and make it work, so that we can bring these businesses to the city.
Thank you. Mike is next. So, Mike Van Kirk, as a leader in Ham Lake, your decisions can have deep impacts on businesses of every size. Are there any local changes that you would pursue to encourage economic development in the community and to support businesses of all sizes?
Well, I, for 12 years, I worked hard on that, from everything from easing up conditional use permits to zoning, we changed a lot of zoning, tried to make it more feasible for all different kinds of business, from household businesses to car lots, to, you know, I think one of the things recently Mayor Kirkham did, is he was in charge of that road, the frontage roads, to continue to get those frontage roads done for the businesses, that helps out. And they're starting to take off now, we got some more in the plans to get that done. But making sure that our codes are, that the people can come in and build these businesses in our city, if they're on, you know, like Zone 1 or Zone 2, that's great. And to continue to work with our zoning people and make it so it's feasible for these, and obviously, keeping taxes low. When the taxes are low, the developers come, the businesses can come, but if it's a trick question, do I want any type of a sewer district? That's a hard no.
So, we're going to pass it down to David here. So, David, as a leader in Ham Lake, your decisions can have deep impact on businesses of every size. Are there any local changes that you would pursue to encourage economic development in the community and support businesses of all sizes?
Well, I think this is, this is, kind of brings me to the heart of where Ham Lake is right now, because we're transitioning from a more rural community to a small city. And we need to make sure that we're not just doing growth for growth's sake, you know? There are plenty of people that have businesses that would say, "You know what? Let's pack as many people in here as possible, because that means I can make a lot more money." I'm more looking forward to, what do we want Ham Lake to look like? And once we figure out, when we're talking to the community, and we're people that live here and that were raised here, what do you want the Ham Lake to look like? Then we can then look at the businesses we're bringing in. The grocery store is a very hot-button topic. Some people desperately want a grocery store, and other people are like, "No, we do not want a grocery store." But I think it needs to be, we need to listen to the residents of Ham Lake before we make major decisions.
Thank you very much. So, that brings us up to question four, and Mike will be first. A strong sense of community promotes local businesses and encourages citizens to spend their dollars in the local area. What are your ideas to encourage citizen engagement and community development in Ham Lake? How would you provide opportunities for citizens and businesses to have input on major projects and decisions?
Well, I think we've done a lot of work towards that. I think you got to be careful when you say, "We want to decide what businesses come town," it's not what government's role is. That's the private sector. We make it available for them to come. We can't force a grocery store to come here. We can't force your favorite business to come here. But we can make it so that they, if they, look, they got actuaries, they do the math, they know if they can do it. There's a reason the grocery store isn't here. It's sad, my family used that grocery store forever, but once one was built down the road, it was unfeasible. We are in a rural city, and me, people before me, and the current mayor, have all worked hard to keep the rural character with the one-acre lot size. That's why I ran originally the first time, to keep the sewer district out, which would have benefited a few, and the rest of us would have paid the taxes for them. So, I think we just continue doing what we're doing, and keep the taxes low, and work with the individual businesses as they come in. Thank you.
So, David Drager, a strong sense of community promotes local business and encourages citizens to spend their dollar in the local area. What are your ideas to encourage citizen engagement and community development in Ham Lake? How would you provide opportunities for citizens and businesses to have input on major decisions?
I would like to see more small, local businesses. I know whenever I need a plumber or an electrician or something like that, I immediately find somebody in Ham Lake, because I want my money to go to those who are my neighbors. The more community events you have out there, the more you get to know your neighbors, and the more people find and will spend their dollars in the neighborhoods that they're around. If I need to have something built, I would much rather spend maybe a little bit more and find someone a mile down the road than find something significantly cheaper from North Dakota or something like that. So, just putting out and having far more people look for and invest in small, local businesses is what I would do.
Thank you. Pass the mic to David there. Okay, question five. Ham Lake is known for its green and natural spaces. Frequently, candidates that run for office in Ham Lake say they want to keep Ham Lake Ham Lake. If you're on City Council, would this be a priority for you?
Just really quick, I didn't get a chance to answer the last question.
Oh, you didn't?
I think we might have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, either way...
Yeah, we'll go back to question four. I'm really sorry.
Oh, that's all right.
Question four. A strong sense of community promotes local business and encourages citizens to spend their dollars in the local area. What are your ideas to encourage citizen engagement and community development in Ham Lake? How would you provide opportunities for citizens and businesses to have input on major projects and decisions?
Yeah, so, that just goes to, goes back to having a City Council that's welcoming and willing to work with people to bring these businesses to our city. Once again, kind of what Mike said, people, if you have a vision for a business, if you're going to do it successfully, you're going to have a vision for what it is. Is there a market for it? And if the market's there, then let's make a go for it. So, that side of it is going to be the business owner's decision, okay? What we can do as a city is work with those business owners to get those businesses into our city. And by the way, the way we do that is looking at the code, working with the business owner, and seeing if we can make it work to get that business into our city. And once again, they know what their demographic is, they know what services they're going to provide, and by having a close-knit community, those businesses should thrive if they do a good job. It's all about doing a good job. Word goes through a city like this, and people will come to the business.
Thank you. I'm very sorry for skipping you on that last one, but I will strive to do better. Just to hang on to the mic, because you're up next. Ham Lake is known for its green and natural spaces. Frequently, candidates that run for office in Ham Lake say they want to keep Ham Lake Ham Lake. If you're on City Council, would this be a priority for you? Andrew Hallberg?
And I kind of touched on this earlier. There are some things that are out of our hands. Once again, if somebody's a farm owner, and they decide that they want to sell to somebody else, a developer, that's their decision with their property. What I will say is, now, I ran into this when I was doing the dog facility, you look at a lot of our green area, a lot of it is sod fields. A lot of those sod fields are peat ground. The amount of infrastructure that would have to go... those sod fields are peat ground. The amount of infrastructure that would have to go into making sod fields, uh, work for developments, uh, would, would be extremely costly, costly. So I think some of that natural green tendency of Ham Lake is gonna stay. The other thing that I think, uh, is there are many citizens that have been here for years and years, and they're not in these developments. They're in two acre, three acre, five acre lots. There's very little desire for a developer to come in and try and buy up six plots of land from six different people. So I think some of our natural greenery will stay, just because of how we're set up.
Thank you very much. Mike Van Kirk. Ham Lake is known for its green and natural spaces. Frequently candidates that run for office in Ham Lake say they want to keep Ham Lake, Ham Lake. If you're on city council, would that be a priority for you?
Yeah, you're welcome. Um, I obviously ran in 2010 on that when, uh, when there was a push for the sewer district. That would have absolutely changed the, the whole, you know, breakdown of Ham Lake. So, right currently, we can't make these big decisions like, uh, so we're, we have a one acre minimum lot size for any housing developer. That's not gonna change. I believe that's in, uh, not only in our code, but in, in our charter also. And, and I think when I got out of the Marine Corps, and I don't wanna date myself, 'cause I still look so young, but, uh, I think, uh, Anoke County was the largest sod developer in the state, I believe. So he's right, there's a lot of lowland there. But, uh, we do try to preserve it. Uh, one of the things we did, uh, actually it was kind of before me, I got a few seconds here, was when they were digging the pits, we made them put plats out and turn those into small lakes, and they had to have a development plat to get in there. That's the kind of stuff we wanna keep going. One acre minimum lot sizes, and, uh, we'll keep, we'll keep that for sure.
Thank you very much. We're gonna pass it down to David Drager here. Ham Lake is known for its green and natural spaces. Frequently candidates that run for office in Ham Lake say they want to keep Ham Lake, Ham Lake. If you're on city council, would this be a priority for you?
Absolutely. This is, this is one of the main reasons why I moved up to Ham Lake. Um, when I was living down in Eagan, our lot was, I think, point zero one eight acres. It was, you know, the footprint of a small room. Um, and then I moved up to Ham Lake, and, and people that I worked with were like, wait, you live up in Ham Lake? How much land do you have? It's like, oh, I have an acre and a half. They're like, wow, what are you gonna do with all of that land? And it's kind of amazing when you see places like Andover or Blaine where they're happy on a quarter acre. And you know what? Um, when it comes to lot size, one acre is great. Maybe for some of the developments, we need to, uh, think about making it an acre and a half or two acres. Um, we can't, you know, we can't decide on who's going to buy the land, but again, it's gonna be the residents of Ham Lake that probably have a say in what it's gonna look like in the future.
Thank you very much. Okay, so Andrew's gonna be the next answerer here. Um, and just so you know, we're at the halfway point, question six, so we're doing good. Given budget constraints, how would you plan to maximize the use of taxpayer dollars and still provide support for business and individuals residing in Ham Lake? Do you have ways or ideas for ways to increase Ham Lake's revenue or decrease city spending?
Well, so the, the revenue is gonna increase with the developments coming in. A lot of these houses that are going in, uh, over on the, the east side, southeast side of the city, um, off Lexington there, these are high end houses. They're paying a, a greater property tax because of the value of the home. So that, the revenue will come up from that. Um, I don't think we need to, uh, develop and create new revenue streams that are by, by way of, of higher taxes. Um, so that, that would not be a push of mine. Um, as far as, um, oh, and I'm sorry, what, what was the second part of that question?
Well, do you, you answered the second part. Given budget constraints, how do you plan to maximize the use of dollars and still support businesses and individuals?
So, uh, once again, I, I think, and to, to kind of talk on what Ham Lake has done with, uh, a lot of the, the city vehicles and stuff, um, I believe one of the fire engines, we, we actually bought a very good, clean fire engine from a different city, and we got a very good price on it. Um, you know, I, I've seen that business side of it. It, you start talking about big equipment, it's very easy to spend two hundred, three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars. So I think Ham Lake i- is gonna continue to be, uh, you know, money conscious on making these, these decisions. And I, I absolutely have every plan of going along with that.
Thank you very much. Mike Van Kirk's up next. Given budget constraints, how do you plan to maximize the use of taxpayer dollars and still provide support for businesses and individuals residing in Ham Lake?
Well, good news is, we don't have huge constraints right now, um, because the city's been run so well financially. Um, obviously 2026 will be debt free. One, one of the things that started from, especially from me, but even, uh, mayors before us, as the rate goes up, government, government likes to help government grow so government can get bigger so they can have more government. What we did is the, is the, as the tax base went up and the values of the homes and businesses, we cut the rate. We keep cutting the rate, keep cutting the rate, just like you would at your kitchen table if you gotta pay your bills. We're gonna continue to do that. In 2026, we'll, uh, we're, we're probably gonna be able to make a rate cut, but we do have to be careful about future road improvements. The road improvements are getting expensive. So I'm, and, and our capital, our capital investment, uh, oh, you cut me off already. Our capital investment accounts look great. Our, but we have to be careful, 'cause the costs of plow trucks and that kind of stuff's going way up. We're aware of it, we've been working on it, we'll continue to work on it. 2026, we're gonna have a, a little wiggle, and we're gonna be able to cut that rate, but we might be able to feed those other, uh, accounts and keep it going without any effect on, uh, out of the people's day to day money.
Thank you. David Drager, given budget constraints, how do you plan to maximize the use of taxpayer dollars and still provide support for businesses and individuals residing in Ham Lake? Do you have ideas for ways to increase revenue or decrease expenditures?
Well, I think one thing Ham Lake has done a phenomenal job in is their, is their budgeting. Um, in order to keep doing this, we are gonna be, have to be a forward thinking city. Um, we can't just put in developments and then go, hell, wait, we need to fix this road, and then, and then you start having problems, uh, spike up. You wanna be like, okay, we know there's gonna be development in this area, we know we're gonna have to replace or fix this road, let's start saving money up and fixing it. Um, being able to tackle some of these, I mean, there's a frontage road by my house that floods every single time it rains. Um, we need to be forward thinking and, uh, 'cause I know they wanna put another frontage road in the same exact area. Well, if the first one floods, let's, let's think about it before we start putting in the second one. Um, when we comes down to buying equipment, yes, we can buy, like, used stuff from the bigger cities that have let love to spend in tax. And then I think we can just, you know, relax a little bit, but focus more on the future stuff.
Thank you very much. So now we're got some questions, moving away from money. We have a public safety question, and Mike is up first. A public safety question. What efforts should Ham Lake consider to keep residents and visitors safe?
What was, what efforts?
Yeah, and, and I'll just add a little bit here. This can apply to road safety, to public, you know, other kinds of public safety.
All the above. So one of the, well, we got fire station number three in southeast Ham Lake. That's a big one. I think we're pretty good on fire stations, I would say, for a long time. Um, continue to work with the Anoke County Sheriff's contracts, that, that's been good. It's not an easy job. You've got, they like to go increase more than the city's budget increases overall. So you have to watch that stuff, but they've done a great job. Overall, it's a benefit to the city as opposed to having its own, uh, own police department. I can attest to that, 'cause I looked into it extremely, extremely, uh, in fine tooth comb manner back. So the roads, we have the revolving road fund, that's gonna be funded. And what I was talking about is, we've been fixing roads that existed that didn't get included on the revol- evolving road fund. We're gonna continue doing that as the budget allows us.
Thank you very much. Mr. Drager, you're up next. So we have the public safety question. What efforts should Ham Lake consider to keep residents and visitors safe?
Um, this is one of those where it, it's really hard. Working in the law enforcement, uh, community for 18 years, it's really hard to explain to people what goes on behind, behind the, you know, the kind of behind the curtain. All they know is, uh, they call 911 every now and then, and someone shows up. This is one of those where it, we need to be, make sure we are actively looking forward and actively trying to make sure that we keep our city safe. We don't want, we don't want the, the nonsense to come up from the cities to come hitting Ham Lake, and then all of a sudden, we're sitting there going, oh, man, we really have to deal with this. Um, I'm doing a ride along this weekend with one of our sheriff deputies in our area, just 'cause I wanna get a, a hands on, uh, first person experience about what they do and how they take care of situations.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hallberg, I would forget you that time. A public safety question. What efforts should Ham Lake consider to keep residents and visitors safe?
Uh, yeah, so I, I'm gonna go on with the city being proactive and looking for things that are issues as we have growth. Uh, there's gonna be expansion of Lexington Avenue coming further up, uh, to, I believe, the intersection of Crotown. Things are gonna change, just like they did down in Blaine. But now being able to, as a council, as a city, look at things very closely and make sure they're done, done right. Uh, when I lived over off of Bunker in Lexington, in the span of one summer after, uh, the, after they had changed the road, we had, we had two fatalities of motorcycles, and that was because we had a blinking yellow light in rush hour. And you have a motorcycle making a turn, or a car making a turn, not seeing the motorcycle coming down Lexington. Now, I think, as we grow as a city, to be able to look at it on our side and make sure that we don't allow these things to happen as much as we can. Contacting the, the county, working with them, if it's a county issue, if it's a city issue, taking care of it ourselves.
Thank you very much. So David's gonna start off the next question here. Another change of topic. What programs or services would you like to see implemented or changed for the youth of Ham Lake?
Um, there's, there's not a lot of change that I would wanna see in this one. I mean, that's, you know, Ham Lake does a fantastic job with, with the services they have, with the parks they provide. Um, it's, it's not something that we need a radical change in. We just, we have the, we have the spaces and availability for people to go. If they wanna go frisbee golf, they can go frisbee golf. Um, we, we have the spaces and we have the availability. I think we just need to let people do their thing and let youth enjoy it.
Okay, thank you. Um, Andrew Hallberg, what programs or services would you like to see implemented or changed for the youth of Ham Lake?
Um, so some of this, I think, is gonna happen over time, as these developments are coming in, and they have plans of easements for making bicycle paths and stuff. I think that's important to have those things in place while these developments are coming in, at the same time, making sure that it, it's done in a common sense ways. I, I was at someone's house last week where property lines got restructured, the county, or the city set the easement across the front, but then they also wanted to run easements down between each of his property lines, and it was non-common sense issues. And they were able to figure that out with the city, because we've got a good city that works with people. Um, and then also, I like to look at it as, as going back to the, the business friendly side of things. I started working at a very young age. I think that's one of the best things that, that can contribute to our young adults as they're growing up. If we have businesses coming into the city where our youth can start working, build a work ethic, and, and mature into contributing members of society, that's just gonna be better for all of us.
Thank you very much. Mike Van Kirk, what programs or services would you like to see implemented or changed for the youth of Ham Lake?
Well, one of the things we got, we're very active with Soderville Athletic Association. The city's worked over the years, helping them with their storage of buildings, taking care of the, and, and they are active. I mean, I can't remember how many hundreds of kids use that. And then, and my, when I, my first came in as mayor, that was the crash years. And then it was a few years, there was like no development. And when development started, we started using that funding, and we were, started to catch up to the parks, revitalizing the parks, get that stuff done. I think that one of the things I, I thought we had approved at one time, I don't know if it got done, was an archery range. And now in southeast Ham Lake, uh, talking to some people from the city, we're looking at perhaps a natural park where you kind of let it grow wild with some, with, uh, with, uh, trails where you can either ride your bicycles, walk your dogs, that kind of thing. Look, it, there's been a lot of talk about that, it's time we do that. Definitely wanna see an archery range. That's, that's an up and coming, uh, youth sport that, that's getting wildly, uh, popular, and I've seen it work in, uh, Andover too there. So I think that's what we do. Keep the money coming when we can, and, and look at some alternate parks here.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hallberg, what do you think about Ham, whoa, I'm sorry, I'm gonna put my glasses down so I can actually read it. What do you think Ham Lake should do to support senior citizens and keep them in Ham Lake?
Well, so this is, this is something that I will say is, is difficult, just because, uh, a lot of these facilities that are going up require, uh, they're, they do require the city water and sewer. A lot of these units that are gonna have a couple hundred units inside of it. Um, I, I, quite frankly, I would put this back on to what we just talked about, uh, our city parks and stuff, uh, being able to provide an area where senior citizens can get out and stretch their legs and keep moving. A body in motion stays in motion. I, I, I watched on a firsthand basis as, when my grandmother passed, and my grandpa decided he wanted to sit inside and watch Fox News and CNN, his decline was so quick and so immediate, that I think keeping the city a place where, uh, our senior citizens can enjoy it, they can get out, and they can get that fresh air, it's really the best, the best thing I think we could do for them.
Thank you. So Mike Van Kirk, what do you think Ham Lake should do to support senior citizens and keep them in Ham Lake?
Well, we have the, the senior center, of course, and, uh, Ham Lake, uh, also uses some funding to start the senior housing over there on Bunker. I think that's paid for now. I believe that's, is that paid for? I think it was. Yeah, it's paid off. So continue to do that. It's, it's hard to build senior housing when you're in a city that doesn't have high density, uh, lot sizes. But that is one that, that we did manage to do. And, uh, and I agree with, with Andy. Some, you know, the more, the more the parks and the better maintained they are, the more people can get out and walk. Obviously, Ham Lake is 36 miles of rural community, and a lot of two lane roads, it's not a super walk and bicycle friendly thing. It's hard to retrofit that in. We looked at that. It would cost, like, at the time, a quarter of a million dollars, uh, a half a mile just to put in existing. So do what we can, and in the newer neighborhoods, wider streets, we're doing all curb and gutter now, that helps out too, and the streets are wider for, for walking, for riding bicycles.
Thank you very much. David Drager, what do you think Ham Lake should do to support senior citizens and keep them in Ham Lake?
Um, well, I'm, I'm gonna kind of reiterate what was already being said. Um, making our, making, making sure we're planning our, our community to be friendly enough that we can walk around it. Um, a few things more frustrating than my son wanting to go to the, go to the, uh, gas station, and there's not a walking path, and I'm not gonna have him riding down 65. Um, if we could have more, more, maybe more sidewalks, more planning, or more planning ahead again, just so that we can, we can anticipate the needs that are going to be happening in an area that are gonna be happening. If we're gonna have senior, uh, housing in an area, great, let's look ahead, plan, so we can, we can take care of it before it's already in.
Thank you very much. Question 10, and Mike goes first. If elected, how will you balance the demands of the city office, or the, the bans of the office and of city council with the demands of your personal life? I'll do that better without a gap there. If elected, how will you balance the demands of the office on, on city council with demands of your personal life?
That's a great question, especially for me. I had a career change, that's why I had to resign as mayor, 'cause of, uh, and I'm sure Mr. Kirkham has found out, that you don't just meet every two weeks. You're on the phone daily, and I, and I couldn't give it 100% of my time, and I thought I was cheating the citizens because of my new work schedule. So I resigned. As, as council member, now that three, you know, two and a half years later, uh, my job is much more streamlined, I've got the time, I can make the commitment, I have the experience, nothing's new to me, I can continue the things that have worked in good, and, uh, and, and continue to lead in those, in those categories, and on those committees that are important, law enforcement, personnel, all the big ticket money spending ones. I don't wanna leave that hole for Gary, but I, I have no problem, uh, jockeying. I might not be able to make every council meeting, but I can make all my committee meetings, uh, without a problem. I shouldn't have any problem with that.
Thank you very much. David Drager's up next. If elected, how will you balance the demands of the office of city council with the demands of your personal life?
Um, well, right now, I won't lie. Uh, right now, uh, I have a lot of free time on my hands, so meeting and greeting and saying hi to people is, is, is quite easy. But, uh, I think the big thing we need to do, what I, what I see is, is we need to make it easier to connect with, with city hall. Um, I know anybody can go down there and watch during those meetings, but they're, it's just kind of cold and sterile. I think we need to have more, maybe an online presence where people can, uh, have an open dialogue on like a Facebook page or something to that effect where, so that way it, it makes everything a little bit easier. Um, that way we can reach out to people in a manner that's timely, it's quick, um, and not, and then not kind of waste time just sitting around.
Thank you very much. So we're gonna, um, skip one of the wonderful questions, I'm sorry, 'cause we're running low on time. The next question is...
He skipped Andy on that special.
Oh, I skipped Andy, oh my goodness!
Are you sure you're not biased on this stuff?
Okay. Mr. Hallberg, shall I repeat the question? If elected, how will you balance the demands of city council with the demands of your personal the demands of city council with the demands of your personal life?" Just trying to save some time here.
I'm a busy person by design. I like being busy. I work a lot. I work a lot of hours, but I have complete control over my schedule. I have the ability to set things in motion, get away from my other obligations. And I've done this for a long time. Up until 2021, I was coaching wrestling, and I compared my time, when I was thinking about doing this, can I make this time work? And that was a job where I would work, and then I'd go, and I'd run to wrestling practice for two and a half, three hours every single night, and then there was a tournament every Saturday, and that was for three months during the winter. And in my time of doing that, I've missed very few practices. I've missed very few matches. So I have the ability to get my stuff done and be able to meet the obligations that the city's going to require.
Thank you very much. So now we're just going to go to closing statements because of the time, and these are statements that you guys, there's no question that goes with it. You just share your final thoughts, and we're going to start with Mr. Drager. So you get one minute for closing statements, right? One minute for closing statements. There you go.
Well, one thing my wife will very clearly say is I don't know how to sell myself. I'm not a businessman. I'm not a salesman. I'm not a politician. But I am a guy that knows that he needs to get the job done at the right time, right the first time. And I make sure that when I'm doing something or something's in front of me, I'm crossing all the Ts, dotting all the Is, looking at all the angles to make sure everything is done correctly. I want to make sure that this city is going in a direction that everybody is kind of, is okay with, not just a few people, not just a small percentage of the very vocal people. They get to have their say, but everybody gets to have a say, and everybody gets to have their ideas at least heard.
Thank you. Mr. Hallberg, closing remarks?
Just something to touch on from before. Yes, Mike and I, he is my uncle. We are related. We have a big difference in age. We've had a big difference in how we've built our lives. No two people are the same. I've got a different way of going from A to B. He has a different way. Sometimes he'll go to C. I would not let that be something that would keep you from voting for me on city council, into city council. I believe in being efficient and being effective and being accountable to the city. The reason why I'm doing this is because, once again, I take a great deal of pride in this city. I, there's so many things about it I enjoy, and I want to keep that going. I want to have a hand in making Ham Lake consistent and a beacon of what city, responsible cityship should look like for many years to come.
Thank you very much. Mr. Van Kirk, closing remarks?
If you like Ham Lake the way it is, and want to keep it that way, I'm your guy. If you like one-acre lot sizes, if you want smaller government, less intrusive government, if you want government that's accountable to its leaders and not the other way around, if you want, if you want to continue to always, for us to focus on more efficiency, more bang for the buck, just like you do at your kitchen table, I'm your guy. If you want, if you want, if you're business savvy, you want to come in and you got to make a squeeze-in, we're there to help you out. We've changed so much in the codes, did so much, been responsible with the money. I want to continue doing that, and don't ever worry about having any type of a sewer district in the city. That would ruin its character. If you like its rural character, if you want to enjoy the free spaces, and if you want to have a free pork sandwich on the Fourth of July celebration, I'm your guy.
Thank you very much. So we're going to wrap up now. We want to thank the candidates for speaking to voters about issues and for running for council. Thank you. I want to thank the audience tonight. You've been very, very good, very attentive, and very good at sneaking behind the cameras, so I appreciate that. And we also want to thank the audience and the people that sent in questions. I will say, remind you that we have links to all these forums that are going to be posted on lvaabcmn.org, our website, and also link to a voter information site run by League of Women Voters called Vote411. And I would urge all the candidates to put their candidate information on Vote411 if you haven't already. The general election is on November 5th, as you know, but we've already started early voting. You can vote early at Ham Lake City Hall or the Anoka County Elections Office, and there's more information about that on the Ham Lake website. You can register at the time you vote, so you don't have to register in advance. And, you know, your voice is, your vote is your voice, so make your voice heard by voting in the general election. Thank you.